Could I have a motion, please, to bring us out of closed session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of coming out of closed session, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Okay. Mr. West?
Join me to pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take this opportunity on behalf of our board to welcome back our long-lost friend for a while, Mr. Rick Pridgen. We're happy to see him back and looking so well.
Yay, Rick.
Yes.
Sir.
Okay. We are going to begin with the budget update.
We need to, do you want to approve the agenda first? Ms. Burden?
Okay, I will.
It's all right, I can do those updates, I guess that's the order, we'll just go in order. Is that all right, Ms. Rachel, if we just? We'll stay in order. Good evening, everyone, welcome again, and Mr. Pridgen, welcome back, it's good to see you back where you belong though in a different chair. Two updates for the board, Ms. Burden and I last week went down and met with our Board of County Commissioners partially on some different initiatives around funding for certified staff as well as our low-performing schools. We had a proposal of looking similar to what we did at Goldsboro High School this year for staff retention. As most of you know, we have a lot of flake from those schools. They get a job, they stay, principals train them, and they transfer to other schools. Part of what we had done at Goldsboro this year on the restart model was providing financial incentives, making it part of their contract that then they are agreeing to stay there for X number of years, and that's backloaded with some performance evaluations. Attendance, which was a huge piece of what we found that being there, attending all the staff development, turning in your lesson plans, and going through that structured training on lesson plans and best teaching practices. We had given some information to the Board of Commissioners down there. We went down and part of what the discussion was, was five of our highest poverty schools, which ranged from seventy-nine point four percent up to ninety-two percent. From that seventy-nine point four, our next closest or number six was down at right around sixty-nine percent. So there's a huge disparity there. So what we're trying to do is look at how we can qualitative, put some incentives together that not only help us recruit certified teachers, but also maintain them there so we can get some continuity. The good news, based on that meeting and discussion, they have since come back to me, I had some follow-up conversations this morning, that they didn't want just the five lowest performing, or based on a poverty percentage. They wanted to include all of our schools that are in the low-performing status. So we're going to go back and rework that and get that to them before next week's meeting. We also had put on that agenda an increase in the certified stipend or supplement that would be district-wide. And as we get into more into the budget, I know we have a workshop coming up on the budget of what other recommendations and different things will go to them. Another big area of topic that we talked about was the safety and security, and as probably most of you know reading the newspapers, the government, or the governor is initiating to the General Assembly to release a lot of money for safety and security. So we have some recommendations that will be coming to them with that. And then any other large or capital improvement plans we would add to that. So I will say, Ms. Burden, if you want to chime in, they seem very amenable and serious about helping us out with this initiative. I know they're talking financially among themselves, so where that ranks, and I could say in my three years now, this will be my third budget cycle working with them, I'm very encouraged and optimistic that I think they're really interested in helping us, that we can get something in place and quantitatively report on each year the impact of that. I will say this year, what happened at Goldsboro High School, we only had one teacher leave, which is unheard of since I've been here, and the one teacher is leaving, her husband is a fighter pilot, they're only here for two years, so she doesn't have a choice, it was either stay at Goldsboro and teach, or go with her husband, and I understand her choice there. So we are seeing the impact of that, we're really excited, a lot of the preliminary formative assessments over there, I think we're going to see some good results. So we'll be putting that back together and taking it back to the Commissioners and for our budget meeting, hopefully we'll have some good news around that area. Because as most of you know, last year we went with five initiatives, and we didn't, we weren't successful with any of them. I will, as far as the facilities update, several things, first Meadow Lane, I'm going to send out, they sent a little drone, I don't know who operates it up, but I have some aerial pictures if you haven't been over by there. The roof is on the Jim McCafetorium area, the two main hallways, and some several other areas that are getting very close to Mr. West, I guess it's called drying in the building, it'll start being closed up if they can put doors and windows in and really get busy. So they are ahead of schedule. One of the things that I would like to offer Board members, we're trying to schedule a visit down to Hanslow County. They have a similar school, it's about six months in front of ours, that they're starting to do painting, and it's getting real close to being done. So if anybody's done, look for that information to come out, and if you'd like to go along, you're more than welcome, and we'll get that set up to get down and look at that. We have the, I know several members, Mr. Arnold and Mr. Len were at the meeting down at Southern Wayne, we have the new drawings that came in on that project down there to get it in line with the budget, and we're trying to get a date to get that group back together. So we'll hopefully have that finalized this week that we can get moving. And lastly, on the process in the northern end with the addition of the classrooms, they're finishing up the septic or the sewage run, the engineering piece of that. As some of you aware, we're here, there were some questions up at Fremont whether that sewage plant can handle the additional runs and where everything are, but they have all the engineering studies done with that, and hopefully we're going to have all the information ready to get rolling on that project also. If anybody has any questions, please, I'd be more than happy to do my best to answer them.
Are there any questions for the superintendent?
I've got one. On the incentives for the low-performance schools that you mentioned with the Commissioners, how well was that received or the receptiveness in that? For coming up with a plan, for instance?
They actually, what we presented, they asked if it was enough, and they wanted us to come back with a broader range in expanding it from five schools to six, or eleven schools, to add six schools and broaden the range. So I think it was very encouraging. And, you know, the follow-up, and as you were at the meeting last year, they asked for a lot and we got nothing. Mr. Hennicott pulled me aside today and said that the conversation after Ms. Patton and I had left was very positive. They're interested in this because it's something that we'll be able to gauge the impact, not only in the teacher retention and the absenteeism, but hopefully after a year or two, starting to see those test scores be impacted also. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Dr. Dunsmore.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, ma'am, if I could, please, speaking with our Legal Council today, we have several things under the consent agenda in regards to policy, and there's some work they asked that we pull off some different things and items that have come up statewide that are going to impact that and would like to send back to the Policy Committee, and our Legal Council has been attending the policy meetings and better discuss those. But if I may, items I, J, O, P, R, S, T, U, and W, and X be pulled to go back for some additions and amendments to the Policy Committee. I will add, this is, as most of you are aware, the School Board Association does a lot of the policy work this time of year for a lot of updates and changes. The majority of these we have been working on quite diligently with our legal team, and that's something that we need to pull back and have more Board member input to get some local teeth in that for what we need specifically here in Wayne County. So I would ask if those items just be pulled from the agenda and returned to the Policy Committee, ma'am.
I need a motion on it.
Ms. Burden, is it, I mean, at this time, if people see anything from the consent agenda, is that what you're saying, Russ?
Yes. Is the Personnel Board report and the renewal list are coming off of the consent agenda, are they not?
Yes, we did want to pull the General Personnel Board report B and vote on that separately. So I need a motion.
And also the license renewal list.
Say what now?
Also the renewal list, correct?
C, B and C.
B and C.
Yes, ma'am. That was Board member request, we will need a motion for those.
So first, may I have a motion for pulling B and C?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we pull items B and C for consideration individually.
A second, ma'am.
All right, thank you, we have a second to pull items B and C to be considered individually or separately from the consent vote. Any discussion?
This is a matter of procedure, Ron. Some kind of way, I was under understanding that a Board member could request something to be pulled, but it didn't require a vote. But you're saying it does require a vote, a motion, a second and a vote?
I was saying that she asked what amendments that were going to be to the consent agenda, or what was coming off of there. And so my understanding is that those are items that you guys do not wish to include any longer on the consent agenda.
Okay, but we do not need a motion or vote, we can just pull them?
If someone says that they want to pull from the consent agenda, then you can pull it, because if it requires discussion, it cannot be on consent.
Okay.
So you can just?
All right, so those two items are pulled, and now do I need a motion for removing the other items as named? We can just do that?
You can also pull the other items because you have them on a consent agenda. The difference will be that you don't intend to take them up later on in the meeting.
Okay. We will pull the following items, I, J, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, W, X from the consent agenda to be taken back to the Policy Committee for review. All right?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All right. We have a second to approve the agenda as amended, any discussion? All in favor indicate by sure raising your right hand? Any opposed? All right, thank you, motion carries. All right, so at this time, we need a motion to vote on items. No, okay, no, you need to follow with a proclamation, Better Speech and Hearing Month.
And Madam Chair, don't we need to go ahead and vote on B and C?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh-uh, we don't do that until we get to the consent agenda. Remember, they've been put, oh, yeah, under the consent agenda.
We just approved the agenda, I'm with you.
Okay. So now we are at the proclamation, Better Speech and Hearing Month.
Let me follow up on Ms. Strickland, what Ms. Strickland is saying is those things are going to be voted on by the Board, there's going to be Board action on those things now that they are not on the consent agenda. So you will need to amend the agenda to include those items under Board action. So the policies that you removed, you are not going to vote on in any other format, they're off.
They would need to be four F and four G.
B and C that you removed will become F and G under your Board action, or wherever you want to add them in there.
Four F and four, four G.
Four F. And four G, okay. And those are the two items that we're pulling to vote separately, okay? Now, we took care of that, right?
Right.
Okay. All right, again, I go back to.
You need, no, you need to, you need to have a motion to add, to amend the Board action agenda to include those items.
Well, I thought that Mr. Flowers did that, he said we voted on it.
He removed it from the consent agenda. So you won't vote on the policy items because you don't intend to add them anywhere else, you don't intend to move them to any portion of the agenda. But when you pulled B and C, you intend to add that then to Board action for a vote?
Okay, so I need a motion for that?
Yes, ma'am, please.
I need a motion, please, Mr. Henderson?
Madam Chair, I'd like to amend the agenda so that we can have the General Personnel Board report listed as four F and our license renewal list as four G.
All right. A second?
Second.
All right. We have a second in favor of placing items B and C as four F and four G. Are we ready for the vote? All in favor indicate by sure raising your right hand? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now, I go back to proclamation, Better Speech and Hearing Month.
I thought you had those, I apologize.
No, what I had was the Governor's school.
We'll go on to this, I'll get this.
All right, we're going to move on to approval of the minutes from the March twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen meeting.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes.
You have a second.
All right. Any discussion? Okay, the motion is to approve the minutes of March twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen. All in favor indicate by sure raising your right hand? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Now I need a motion for the approval of closed session minutes for March twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the closed session minutes for March twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen.
Do you want to also release them to be open now?
Yes, I do. And to release. Make a motion to approve and release.
Second.
All right, we have a second, first and second, to approve the closed session minutes and release them to be open. All in favor indicate by sure raising your right hand? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now we have advanced ed accreditation.
All right, good evening, Board members.
Good evening.
The Board Curriculum Committee met on April thirteenth to discuss some possible options for advanced ed accreditation after our March two thousand and nineteen accreditation review that we're scheduled to have. That Board Committee unanimously favored moving to high schools only accreditation for the next cycle after March two thousand and nineteen, and directed me to bring this high schools only option to the full Board tonight for action. In discussion with the Curriculum Committee, it was noted that costs for district versus high schools only are comparable, that after March thirteen, if we, I mean, March two thousand and nineteen, if we moved to high schools only, our high schools would go on a cycle within the five years, so they wouldn't all be reviewed at the same time. The move would relieve middle and elementary principals of some extra duties, but at the same time, high school principals wouldn't really have any additional duties because they're already preparing for a review, so that work would just continue. All of the schools would continue with their mandated school improvement activities in NC Star. And just a note of data information, a little more than half of all LEAs in North Carolina currently use district accreditation, so just slightly less than half do school accreditation. So I'm bringing that to the Board as directed by the Curriculum Committee. I believe someone on the Board would have to.
Make a motion?
Make a motion.
I need a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the changing of district level advanced ed accreditation to high school accreditation only beginning after March nineteenth, which would be at the end of the current cycle to begin the new cycle.
I'll second.
We have a second? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Henderson?
Yes, I am speaking against the motion to, to switch over to twenty nineteen. I'd like to ask some questions, Mr. Ishi, can you tell me how long we have been going through this accreditation process? With it being all the schools instead of just high?
I believe this is our second five-year cycle, so this will be ten years in district accreditation. Before that, I believe the county did individual schools, they did all the schools individually previous to that, and I don't know the history before that, they did just high schools at some point, I think when it was SACS before it was advanced ed. But we've been ten years in the all district.
Okay, and comparatively, have you been able to make any distinction between the high schools only versus the all schools?
Comparative.
As to which is actually better? And not?
Yeah, I mean, I, I have personal opinions, I think.
And do you have data to support it? Do you have data to support it? Good question I'd ask.
Wow. That's, I'm going to be honest, that's a very tough question for me to answer without injecting my personal opinion about it. I don't think it makes any difference for the high schools, they're, as I said, going to be doing the same work that they would be doing anyway. All of our high schools already prepare for an accreditation visit, two of them get it, they don't know which two are going to be visited, so no difference for them. You know, I guess I have to go back benefits-wise for the elementary and middle to, is there some large research-based benefit for the elementary and middle schools to be accredited versus the work that's required at the elementary and middle level to be part of the review? I think the work is more onerous than there are any particular academic benefits. You're getting a lot of my opinion here. I don't think the elementary and middle schools being part of district accreditation is helping them improve and become better schools.
Okay. Did we just complete a survey with the advanced ed within the last couple of months? Climate and culture survey?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
And do you have the number of responses that we had?
I don't.
Okay. I'd like to share this with the Board.
Absolutely.
Of those surveys that were done, there were one thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight parents that were surveyed. For six to twelve students, there were four thousand two hundred and eight surveys conducted. For the elementary schools, it was two thousand eight hundred and eighty-one surveys. For support staff, it was four hundred and one, and for teachers, it was nine hundred and ninety-six. That's a lot of data right there that showed, to me, shows to me that we have a lot of interest in, from our parents, from our students, and from our teachers in this advanced ed accreditation. And from the survey results that I've seen, it was a very positive survey. So looking at this and recognizing that one of the main concerns that we have is issues of community involvement as well as parental involvement, this shows me that we had a good source of that coming through this process. So, and secondly, I would say that if we just go to just high schools, there is no continuity as to what our kids would be learning from the onset at the lower grade that would help them towards the high school as far as accreditation is concerned. And that would be one of the reasons that I would vote against this.
Any other comments? Are we ready to vote? The motion is that we move from a district evaluation of our schools through advanced ed after the March two thousand and nineteenth evaluations session, and move to only high schools accreditation. All in favor indicate by sure of your right hand? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, Dr. Dunsmore, we will move back now to our proclamation, Better Speech and Hearing Month.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I do believe we have some speech and language and hearing impaired folks in the audience, if you would please come up. Ms. Hamm, Ms. Sanja. I never had to have speech, but I had many, many hearings tests where you raised the right hand to hear the tone, and it's getting worse the older I get, so. Thank you all for coming here, and as we said earlier, this is the proclamation for the Speech and Language Association nationally. And whereas the American Speech Language Hearing Association nationally recognizes the month of May as Better Speech and Hearing Month, and whereas the American Speech Language Hearing Association has chosen two thousand and eighteen theme of Better Speech and Hearing Month as Communication for All, and whereas the profession of school-based speech and language pathologists, audiologists, and teachers, the hearing impaired represent a community of thousands of professionals who dedicate their lives to helping children and students in need and providing supports in schools across our district, and whereas these professionals are highly trained individuals who follow strict ethics policies and maintain certification by demonstrating acting and ongoing development, and whereas these professionals are crucial to each school's special education team and are invaluable to the support resources for schools and classroom stakeholders as well as parents, and whereas these professionals have a lasting impact on future generations by both providing exemplary service to our schools and also catering to the individuals of needs of Wayne County Public School students across all levels of education. Now therefore be resolved that Wayne County Board of Education recognizes and hereby proclaims the month of May two thousand and eighteen is Better Speech and Hearing Month, and calls upon all of Wayne County Public School stakeholders to recognize the achievements and contribution of these valued professionals. Signed this date by Patricia A. Burden, Chairman of the Board of Education, and Michael Dunsmore, Superintendent. And if I might add, just by somebody grew up in the area of special education and a mother who was a special needs student nurse, I know what you all do to get certified, and I know what it takes to keep those certifications. Thank you for staying with public schools. Thank you for staying with public schools. Please come up, shake everybody's hands, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for what you do. Thank you very much. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for what you do. All that you do. Thank you for what you do. Thank you. Okay, thank you all. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair, I make a motion with approval of proclamation.
Second. Okay, any discussion?
I would like-
Oh, yes, go ahead, Mr. Flowers.
I would just like to say a special thank you. I'm hearing impaired, have been most all of my life, and I want to thank the folks for doing that. Our children, when I was in school, I don't think I was, it was ever recognized, and I think our schools do a much better job of that now than they have in the past, but as a student that didn't hear well, I oftentimes think about that Charlie Brown cartoon where there's teachers talking and the students just hearing wah, 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 wah. Do you remember that one? I don't really think that's why that cartoon's portraying, but if you don't hear well, that's kind of the way it is. And oftentimes, you know, you sort of, as a student, the teacher maybe doesn't think you're paying attention, and just a lot of different things that are difficult, but I wanted to give you a special thank you on a personal basis.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Flowers.
I'd like to say that I agree with Mr. Flowers wholeheartedly, but my situation was fourth grade before I ever realized I needed glasses, but when the teacher wrote on the board, I had to put my chair up there at the front, she kept asking me, "Why do you do that?" I said, "'Cause I can't see, I'm a Friggin', I'm in the back of the classroom." And so, it was a teacher that made a difference in getting me some help and getting me some help through the school, to convince my parents to take me, you know, eye checkup and that type of thing, so it's not just, it's just not, just audibility is also the highest. My daughter's actually studying in grad school now for becoming a speech pathologist, and I hope she'll choose that educational route to go. It's amazing the amount of people that have problems or lose their voice or have to be retrained, even after they've been talking all their life or singing all their life. And I know what these girls have gone through to get their accreditations and what they're doing, 'cause I hear a lot of phone calls from my daughter at night about, "I just don't know if I can make this or not," but anyway. But, you know, they go through a lot, and they are much appreciated for what they do, but sometimes it becomes a thankless job, and we appreciate you being here, and we thank you for what you do for our children.
All right. All in favor of the approval of the proclamation for Better Speech and Health Month, Hearing Month? Please show, indicate by showing your, by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Okay. All right, and now, Mr. Smith.
Wayne County Board of Education requests to appear before the board. The Wayne County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings. If you wish to appear before the board, please review the following procedures. Appearance request forms are available to the public at the receptionist desk in the lobby 30 minutes prior to the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak must place their appearance request form along with any handouts in the basket located at the receptionist desk in the lobby. The basket will be collected at 5:00 PM, and only those who have an appearance request form in the basket will be allowed to speak. Public comments are scheduled to take place at 5:30 PM. Presentations are limited to a maximum of three minutes. The chairman shall call time on any presentation which exceeds the three-minute limit. Organizations or groups wishing to speak about a particular topic may be asked to reduce the time of each individual or to use a spokesperson to share comments on behalf of their organization or group. Substitute speakers will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. No presentation shall include any complaint, criticism, or negative comment regarding the conduct or performance of identified school personnel. No presentation shall include information about a particular student which is privileged and confidential under the state and federal privacy laws. Mr. Keith Copeland would like to speak, representing the community with regard to concerns regarding low-performing schools. Mr. Copeland?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My grandmother always told me, "If you don't have to say anything, don't say anything." And it sounds like, and I appreciate this board for doing what you did, it sounds like you're already addressing, I just wish I could've known before I made all those copies, but I'm very appreciative of the fact that you did pursue that, and something's positive that's gonna happen, so I don't have anything to say, except, thank you, Dr. Dunsmore.
May I ask that you and any of your other supporters, when this comes before the commissioners, join me in attending that meeting?
Just let me know when I need to be there.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Copeland. All right, now, do we do this first? I need a motion to approve the General Personnel Board report.
So moved.
Do I have a second? This report was pulled for the further discussion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
You do have a second.
All right, we have a second, and is there any discussion?
Yes. Madam Chair, I would like to raise issue with Personnel Board report based on some of our earlier concerns relative to low-performing schools and the need or the request by some of our staff to move from those low-performing schools, especially when they are certified veteran teachers. I'm very concerned about what is happening in our low-performing schools, and I feel at this point, we need to do something differently to kind of protect those schools, and one of the ways of doing that is to ensure that we do get those veteran teachers to remain at that school, at those schools.
Any other comments or discussion?
Well, I do have, I do have a comment. One of the, one of the things that I think Dr. Dunsmore and the meeting that you and Dr. Dunsmore attended, the purpose of that meeting is to address some of those issues that would incentivize teachers remaining at these low-performing schools and attracting teachers to some of these low-performing schools, so in that respect, I do concur, and I do think there are efforts underway to address those issues.
And I think one of those ways, not only is what we discussed with the county commissioners, but also we would have to look at board policy and, and, and maybe consider making some changes there. We, I think we have to start with that, as well as hopefully what the county commissioners may be able to do for us as a district. Any other comments or concerns to be expressed?
Yes, Madam Chair. Again, I would, I would reiterate that some of the ones that I, that we are looking at approving tonight are very veteran employees, and I've had discussions with some of the principals, and they find it extremely difficult to allow a veteran employee from one school in the district to be transferring over to another school in the, in the district, and it just creates, continues to create problems that way, so. And I do appreciate everything that Dr. Dunsmore and yourself have done to try to help curtail some of these problems here at this point, but at some point, we're gonna need to make some kind of stand to say, okay, until we determine what these incentives or these stipends are, we need to figure out what's the best, best route to go about this. So, and that's one of the reasons why I'm saying, well, let's just kind of put a halt on some of these at this point, until we can determine what that incentive is, and even at that, some of these people that have applied might agree to go back to that, to those schools.
Would, would some type of moratorium on moving be possibly what you had in mind?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm kind of thinking about.
Well, I know that this has not been approved by the board yet, but we do have a policy that allows the teachers to apply for transfers, and even though, Mr. Henderson, I really am, am in total agreement with you that we need to do something to address this situation. I don't know if it is too late for the group that has come before us, because they did go through the process that we set down by policy, and I don't know if we could stop that process, I guess I would address that to the attorney in the middle, because that's where they are now. I mean, that's where-
Yeah, but I, but I also understand that in our discussions, we have, we understand that a teacher is employed by the county and not by a school, and therefore, the superintendent has a right to do whatever he deems necessary to correct any issues that we might have.
I'd have to look at your current policy on that, Ms. Burden, I don't have that in front of me.
All right. All right, well, we have a motion on the floor.
I'm sorry, and also those contracts, just to make sure there wasn't anything in there that, that would give them a right to, to necessarily move.
Right now, we have a motion on the floor to approve the General Personnel Board report. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please show by any, by raising your right hand.
I have one question. When we look at C in our computers, and I don't know about you folks, but when mine comes up, when I try to look at license renewal list, which is the next one, then I'm getting an error report on my computer, and it's telling me that it cannot be brought up at this time. So, that, is that just the principals and assistant principals that were included in that, which is also in the general personnel report?
That's just the principals, and mine are also. That's-
So, it's actually mirrored in that report from the general personnel, is that correct? The license and renewal list? The point, the point that I'm trying to get at is my license and renewal list is showing up in the personnel, okay? And if it's showing up again in license renewal list, and, and it's the same thing, then my, I'm not able to pull that up on my computer, it's, Board Docs is giving me an error message.
When I pull up, Mr. Friggin, when I pull up license renewal, I get an error, but when I pull up, pull up the General Personnel Board report, I only get the General Personnel Board report.
You're not getting the principals and assistant principals? I am under the general-
They're, they're under personnel, the license renewal was just the teachers.
Yeah, the principals were under general personnel, correct.
That, that's what I'm saying. I'm getting it there, but I'm not getting it under the license renewal list, not getting anything-
I'm getting an error under the license renewal, I am too.
Yeah, so my question is, is, is that part of the general personnel report?
No, it's separate, based on our list here.
It's 4G.
It's 4G now, it was C.
Well, I understand that, I understand that it's 4G, but on my computer, it's still C, okay? But, if I want to vote on something, I want to know whether I'm voting on something that's all-inclusive of the general personnel report, or am I voting, you know, there's some thing, issues under license renewal that if it's the same as the principals, then I'm not in agreement with it, so.
No, it's not the same.
Okay, is there any way we can get a copy of what's in the license renewal list?
You need to see mine?
Yeah, it would be nice.
Which one would you like? Here, I'll slide it to you. There you go.
Give me just a minute, Madam Chair.
Say what now?
Give me just a minute.
Okay, I will.
This is teachers only.
Okay, we did review this back in the class session.
And these are teachers remaining?
All right, I'm fine now. Ms. Strickland just got me straight.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor of the General Personnel Board report, please show by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Now, we are on 4G license renewal list.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the license renewal list as presented.
All right. I need a second.
I have a second.
All right, we have a second, is there any discussion? We have a motion to approve the license renewal list 2018, 2019. All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right, now we go to the consent vote. I need a motion to approve items D, E, F, G, H, K, L, M, N, Y, Z, AA through DD.
Did you, um-
What about V?
And V.
And V.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the items that you four mentioned.
Second.
All right.
A consent agenda is a group of items passed with a single motion and a vote. These materials and/or items are routine business or have been thoroughly discussed in committee meetings open to the public and attended by board members. No debate is allowed on any item included on the consent agenda. If a board member wants a separate consideration of any item, it may be removed by request.
All right, we have a second.
I have a second.
Yeah, we do have a second, and if there, is there any further discussion?
I did want some clarification on one if I-
No discussion allowed, okay.
We can go ahead, though.
All right. All in favor of approving the consent calendar as read, agenda as read, please show by raising your right hand. Any opposed?
Madam Chair, could I just ask for clarification on the issue that we just voted on? Not, not that I'm gonna, that we got to make motion or anything, I just wanted some clarification.
Is it a legal issue?
It's, it deals with contracts and purchase orders.
Do you, if you need discussion on that, then you need to have it removed from the consent agenda.
Well, consent agenda's already been passed and voted on, so I'll just talk to Mr. Hayes privately.
Is not one that was pulled?
No, ma'am.
Okay, which number is it?
It's E, but it, it doesn't matter, 'cause it's been voted on.
Yes, it has been, okay. All right, I want to know if the students are here to be recognized tonight. Okay, Mr. Friggin?
From Charles B. Acoch High School, Weston Hershey; from Southern Lane High, Malia McKay; and from Spring Creek High, Coral Maxwell. And we would like to ask their families, their principals, and any staff of the exceptional children's department to please join in. If y'all will just kind of face the camera, so everybody can see you're pretty smart.
Smile prettier.
Smile prettier.
These three high school juniors will represent Wayne County Public Schools in the 2018 Governor's School of North Carolina session this summer. Governor's School is the oldest statewide summer residential program for academically and intellectually gifted high school students in the nation. The program, which is open to rising seniors only, with the exceptions made for rising juniors in the visual arts and performing arts category, is located in two campuses. Governor's School West, established in 1963, is located at Salem College in Weston Salem. And Governor's School East was established in 1978 and has been, been carried on at Meredith College in Raleigh. Now, the 2018 session will run from June, June the 17th through July the 25th. And these Wayne County Public School students will be among 600 academically and intellectually gifted students to attend Governor's School program. Interestingly, all three of these students will attend the Governor's School East program in Raleigh, in the area of English. On behalf of the Board of Education, we congratulate all of you on this achievement. Acceptance in the Governor's School of North Carolina is a high honor for students, and we know that this experience will be a wonderful opportunity to further cultivate your talents and your abilities. And with that, we have a certificate that we would like to, to recognize you with, and it reads as follows. Certificate of Recognition, Wayne County Board of Education recognizes Weston Hershey for being selected to attend the 2018 North Carolina Governor's School, given this day, April 23rd, 2018, by Patricia Burden, Chairman of the Board of Education, and by Dr. Dunsmore, Michael Dunsmore, Secretary to the Board. If you will, please, Weston, come forward and receive.
I'm not Weston.
So, does that mean that you're gonna be the coxie and you're gonna go to Governor's School? Our next certificate of recognition will go to Cory Maxwell. Cory, if you will come forward, please.
Coral.
Coral, I'm sorry. Thank you so much. You can tell I didn't go to Governor's School in English. And let me see if I can get this. Malia McKay. Is that right? Okay, Malia, congratulations. And if you, you all will, please go through and shake the board members' hands.
Congratulations.
Excellent job.
Sorry, you can't go.
Have fun.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Congratulations, have fun this summer.
Yeah, you have to as a mom.
Congratulations.
My heart right here. Congratulations. So, those are your three students. Congratulations. Congratulations. I'll say, then I realized, oh, AIG.
It is time for our board members and superintendent's comments. I want to ask Ms. Rachel if she has any comments to make.
No, ma'am. Thank you. Just thank you for the honor of working for the Wayne County Board and the people of Wayne County.
Thank you. Mr. West?
I don't have any comments.
Mr. Flowers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no comments.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes, Madam Chair. First of all, I would like to commend the Wish people for their anniversary, 20th anniversary that they just celebrated last week. I was able, along with several of our board members, to attend that event. It was very well attended by the people in the community, as well as the, all of our Wish participants. And I am a strong supporter of Wish because if it had not been for Wish, I don't know where my grandson would have been. They were very instrumental and very helpful to my family, and they have become a part of my family. So, I am extremely grateful for Wish, and I also would like to take on the vision that Dr. Taylor had mentioned, that he would like to see a Wish Center in all of our schools. And so, that's a dream that I envision as well. I'd also like to say that I had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Steve Parr, the Executive Director of the United Way. He had, he has approached me about his vision that would assist children from zero to three, three years of age in the southern end of the county. I want to schedule a meeting with Dr. Dunsmore and Ms. Burden to further elaborate on what that vision is. I'm, I'm very excited about it, and I hope that this board, if it ever comes to this board, would also jump on board with, with the vision that, that Mr. Parr has. Also had an opportunity to attend the instructional assistance banquet that was held at Brogdon Middle School this, last week. That, I really enjoyed that, enjoyed meeting with the teachers and the teachers' assistants, and we had a very good time. And one of my counterparts over there, Ms. Copeland, we, we really enjoyed ourselves, didn't we, Ms. Copeland, Ms. Burton?
Yes, we did.
We had a wonderful time. I also had an opportunity to attend the National School Boards Conference in, for earlier part of this month. Very enlightening, very educational opportunity, and I would encourage our board members to consider attending these conferences because you get a wealth of knowledge that can be very beneficial to our district, to our leadership team, and to others in the county. I am extremely pleased to hear of the, the inroads that are being made with our county commissioners relative to some of the major concerns that we have and that we've continually addressed. I'm looking forward to further discussions with the county commissioners on trying to ensure that we can get some security and safety measures for our schools, get some type of incentive pay for our teachers in our low-performing schools, and also to continue to work with us on our capital outlet projects. One that I'm real interested in seeing is the Southern Wayne Gym. I thank Dr. Dunsmore for going out to Southern Wayne and meeting with parents and, and other members of the community about that, the gym, and Dr. Dean's Halls and others that attended as well. I thought it was very beneficial, and it was a very discussion, very lively discussion that we had. And there is a strong commitment in, in the southern end of this county to see that that gym becomes a reality for us. And some other ideas that I've, I've been working with others on will be presented to the board later. Thank you.
Mr. Pridgen?
Thank you, Ms. Burden. I did attend Wish, one of the first things I attended since I've been back. And the Wish celebration is always, Wish has always been very special to me and dear to me because of the difference that they're making in children's lives. I will say this to add to what Mr. Henderson said. It was very well attended by all of the facets of the community partnership that, that provides Wish to our students. We had people from DPI in Raleigh down here. We also had the Wish Board, as well as our Wish employees participating. We had very good participation from the city council and the county as well, and Mount Olive Town Board. And it's good to see that all the players have come together. And Wayne Royal Hospital does a great job of furnishing us some in-kind opportunities for that, as well as grant monies. And it cost, it cost a lot of money just to keep one Wish Center open. It was interesting, some of the statistics that they were talking about. And we'd love to see it in all the schools because we were fortunate to hear from parents that had been, had children at Wish and parents that had not had, or they had gone to another school, didn't have a Wish Center. And they talked about the difference that it was, that it made, the impact that it made on their child's life. We've had children that are living today and walking today because of Wish. And Dave Taylor, Taylor actually explained that to us. I'm very proud of the job that they do, and I wish we had one in every single school in the county. That would be great. And one thing they didn't mention was that one year, we did receive the National Civic Star Award, and with the countrywide, nationwide, given by SEDEXO through the Principals and Assistant Principals Association. So, that was, that was a great honor during that time period. It was not mentioned the other day, but we did, we did receive that. In San Antonio, as a matter of fact.
Oh, right.
Yeah. But all in all, I am so glad to be back. I'm glad I made it through the surgeries that I had. When I left here, I only had 10 days that I was expecting to, to be out and be back in recuperation. That 10 days turned into 45 days and several different surgeries when I was only anticipating one. And 45 days on a liquid diet for a fat boy is really tough. Matter of fact, I told my wife Sunday, I said, honey, I said, I got to have some chicken pastry. I cooked some chicken pastry. It was good, too. But anyway, I, I really thank everybody for the prayers, especially the prayers, because even yesterday, I opened up a card. It was from a church that I've never been to before, and they had me on their prayer list in their bulletin. And, and everybody in the church signed that card. And I, I know for a fact that I had people in four or five different states and two countries that were praying for me. And, and it was a tough go. It was a tough road to go. But I've made it through that, and good Lord willing, I've been on heart medications for over 20 years, and I'm not taking a single one right now. And that is a blessing. Thank you. Two, three excellent surgeons that operated on me. And I can't say enough about the care that I received and the division that they had. When, it's very disparaging when you have two major heart places in the state tell you that there's no hope for you. But in this case, I got a third opinion, and it was, I feel like the Lord led, led me to that. Thank you for the flowers, the cards, the letters, the emails, the Facebook posts that were sent. Over thousands, I can't, can't even begin to count. It's just amazing to me. But I do not appreciate the bills that came in the meantime. But, but we'll get past that, too. But thank you all for your prayers and your support, and I really appreciate it. And I hope I'm back on a long line.
All right.
Ms. Strickland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I actually want to start by offering my condolences to the Kirk Keller family, Wayne Community College. I actually did not realize until my brother came down for the funeral yesterday that Kirk was my third cousin. And so, he and my brother were about the same age, and so, they grew up knowing, knowing each other. And I, he, he was doing good things at Wayne Community College, and so, I know he is gonna be greatly missed. The second thing that I would like to mention tonight is thank you to Dr. Dunsmore for the work that you have done with Mr. Honeycutt. I've, I know Mr. West and I both knew there were some talks going on for a few months because we had been speaking with some of the county commissioners. We, I know I had expressed to some of them individually the needs that we have in this county to keep our teachers from running across the line. I have also expressed a desire to try to add a little bit more pay to some of our psychologists and psychiatrists because it's, it's hard to keep them once they have their experience and they go into private practice. And I had a principal recently tell me that, you know, he is seeing more and more mental health issues than he has ever seen in his career. And so, I am so excited that Dr. Dunsmore has forged that strong relationship with the county commissioners over the past two and a half years, and that these conversations can be held. So, we can continue to make strides to help our teachers and to help our students. I'm very excited about that. But one of the things y'all know that I have talked about for two and a half, three years now, I guess three years now, is community. Community schools, communities pulling together, communities doing for one another, look out for each other. Don't always wait for your church to do it. Don't always wait for someone else to do it. So, I have something that I'd like to read that happened at Rosewood Elementary School. And I was not a part of it. I saw it happening and was just ecstatic. So, Kelly Harris, an instructional assistant at Rosewood Elementary, applied for a grant through Lowe's in hopes of adding to the K-1 playground. She was awarded a grant in the amount of $5,000. She then spent countless hours researching the best prices and equipment for our playground, which resulted in six new swings, a 12-by-24 pergola for shade, two playhouses, a sand table, two basketball goals, many types of balls and frisbees. In addition, we had our fence expanded by Daniel's fence to give more space. Gillian Sherry Jones donated and delivered posts for the pergola. Chris Neal of East Carolina's Hardscape set and squared the post in his free time. And our DB CPS maintenance department put the remainder of the pergola together, also installing the border around the play area. Our school, the school system paid for the mulch to be finished. Our business partner, Convenient Glass, donated two children's picnic tables. And on Thursday night at 8:15 at night, I got a request for four bags of concrete. So, on Friday morning, I drove to Lowe's and bought four bags of concrete to deliver them so the basketball goals could be setting over the weekend. That's what community does for its children. You see a need, you identify a need, and you set out a plan to attack it and make it happen. And I want to thank Ms. Harris and all these individuals and businesses who stepped up to help this community and challenged the remaining schools to do the same for their students. And those are my comments.
Mr. Smith?
Wanted to start out by welcoming Mr. Pridgen back. Your presence was sorely missed and glad to see you back on board. Also, EC Department, you guys are doing big things. I'm very proud of what you're doing. Yes, big things. I'm very proud of what you're doing, and the recognition is certainly well, well due. Leadership team, great job. Keep doing what you're doing. I know sometimes you guys get bombarded, overwhelmed, but we appreciate, we appreciate what you bring to the table, the hard work that you put in, because you're the, you're the engine that drives this train. So, thank you for what you do. And last but not least, I told you all I had confidence in my county commissioners.
Is that all?
That's all.
Thank you. I want to recognize Mrs. Copeland. This has been her, last two months have been her months because of all of the activities that we've had in our arts program, our visual and performing arts program. And so, we had our district-wide concert last week, I believe this, last week, last Tuesday night, and it was very, very successful. And it is really uplifting when you have people come from out of town, and they compliment from the teachers, from the students, and then they branch out to the parents, come back to the students, and then recognize teachers, a hospitality of our district, and then all of the staff of the Performing Arts and Visual Arts Department, and then they come up to the leadership team, the superintendent, and the Board of Education because of our supports for the arts. And the most thing that is, is rewarding to me is when they talk about our students, how well-prepared they are. So, that means the teachers have done their jobs. And then, how well they performed throughout that vigorous day of working with the person that they are just meeting, and then the next day, they have a performance, and they did an outstanding job. So, I want to say congratulations to you, and I can't wait until the jazz concert. So, let's let that top off the school year. I had the opportunity to go to San Antonio, and I want to tell you, this is one of the best national conferences that I have been to. I was highly pleased with the sessions that we went to, and many of them focused on concerns that we have right here in Wayne County, and that is high-poverty level schools and, and also working with the board. So, as a new chair, that was very, very important to me. I want to thank all of our speech and hearing staff for the work that they do because I know it's very, very important. Sometimes, they are the individuals that recognize a concern that a student may have, and it makes it easier for the parents to accept this because they have information that leads them to where they need to go. So, I, I really appreciate all that you do. Now, I said when I was reading my packet, I said, what is special ed doing in this category? And then, I realized that under the special ed department, they have what I refer to as the AIG program, which is a talented program for our students. And Ms. Amy Williams leads that program, and she is a special person to me because she works diligently with the students. So, I want to congratulate you all for the work that you're doing. I want to congratulate the students once again, and I would just like to see more coming from each one. And I would just like to see more coming from each one of our high schools going to the Governor's School or doing something of that nature. And I know that you, you all encourage them to, to do just that. In terms of accreditation, Mr. Henderson, I don't think this has to be for, for, forever program, but I do think it's very important that we give our, particularly our elementary schools and middle schools, an opportunity to work diligently to move to being, having a status that's not low-performing. I personally will tell you, in answer to your question, I've been, I've matriculated in both systems. And I feel that when they work with individual schools, you get the most valuable information. So rather than have it come district-wide, I think it is even better if you did all of your schools individualize because then the information that you receive focuses on your individual school and addresses whatever accommodation, applause that you may receive and any areas of concern that they would have. So I think that is, that's one of the best ways to do it, from, from my opinion. That is one of the best ways to do it. I think right now, we're focusing on high schools because we want to give our middle schools and our elementary schools an opportunity to move from this low-performing status. So it doesn't have to be forever. And I think that's my com, my comments. Dr. Dunsmore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, again, shout out to the students that were recognized. Getting into Governor's School is a huge, huge accomplishment. And I know they'll do us proud. To all our staff and the leadership team, and I recognize what you all do above and beyond the call of duty, and I desperately appreciate it. And I thank Mr. Copeland for being in here. But truly, we do have the air of the commissioners. As Ms. Burden said, there's a lot of talk out there. And I know Mr. Smith has brought it to the forefront also. Poverty is an issue, not just here in Wayne County, but across this country. And, and we know that affects school because if students' basic needs aren't being met, there's no way they're coming to school to learn. And I'm really anxious to get even further along this road with our commissioners because I think we're at the cusp of being, being able to do some good things. So I am appreciative of that. And truly, all the support we can get from the staff and the community and get out there and talk, talk what we need and the support is what we need moving forward because it's important. I know at some point, that's our legacy, and we need to do a better job with that. So again, thank you.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
All right, any discussion? No. All in favor, show by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Thank you.